Council meeting back to order after a few minutes recess at nine thirty-eight. We were discussing the budget and the light on, okay. Counselor Pulaski?
I did have one other question on the Veterans Memorial. I did miss that part of the meeting and I was wondering what the ultimate.
What pages? That would be in the CIP?
In CIP.
What page is that? Does anybody have that?
Page forty-five.
Forty-seven.
Oh, I have it right here.
Forty-seven.
Um.
Oh, that was the CIP. Forty-eight, actually.
Veterans Memorial Trust. Right now, their request was for five thousand dollars by the committee and recommended by the town administrator. And you have a question on that?
I, as much as I would like to see a new memorial to the vets, I think with the current economy and no real signs of hope in the future, anything improving soon, I really think that this ought to be put on hold and I don't think we should be putting money, especially five thousand dollars, into the CIP for the memorial trust at this point.
Okay, do I have that in the form of a motion? Should always, when you guys want to do something.
I would like to make a motion to reduce the capital reserve for the memorial trust, Veterans Memorial Trust, down to zero.
Do I have a second on that? Do we have discussion on that? Are you saying because you feel because of the economy or?
I feel, I feel as much as we want to honor our veterans, I think the memorials that we have throughout town should currently suffice until the economy improves so that we can, at that point, if need be, invest in that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pulaski?
Well, I just want to remind the council as a whole and Ms. Plaski is that the money isn't just for the memorial, it's also for improvements that they wish to undertake at the bandstand and they've got a phased approach to doing that. And by putting the money in, they'll be able to do that in addition to saving for a suitable memorial up by the library, which is their overall goal, so they do have a plan in place to do stuff.
If, if the memorial at the library would be put on hold at this point, what would be the figure that we'd be giving for repairs, et cetera, to the bandstand?
It's twenty-three thousand.
All I, all I want to do is just explain that it's just not a veterans memorial, it's also improvements to the bandstand, you know, as, you know, it's more than just a memorial.
Well, as the bandstand is considered in respect as a memorial place, yes, I understand, but I think it probably goes back to Counselor Quox saying is, you gotta set your priorities, I guess. Counselor Quox, you have a question?
I, I thought we had twenty-odd thousand dollars left in that account?
I don't know.
John, what's in that account now? I know they have a veterans trust.
Trust.
They have other entities, monies, other areas, so.
Yeah, I, that I don't know what's in there.
Yeah, you wouldn't know that.
Yeah, for some reason.
That's a trustees thing, isn't it, Mr. Pulaski?
Correct, that's, that's one that is held by Ed Pelzer.
Ed Pelzer, so there are other monies, other areas, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, this, I believe it's still.
But I think they're using the majority of those funds for the work that they're doing by the Hand of Association.
Unless I know what's in there.
There's fifteen thousand in there and you schedule if this passes, CIP passes the way it is, you're putting on the five thousand.
So we need twenty thousand in there?
Right.
Right, okay. I, I know myself, I'm on the committee as chair of the River Rock and we were being funded all the time at twenty-five thousand. Last year, we went down to fifteen thousand, this year, we're down to five thousand, so, you know. All right, I don't see any lights. We have a motion on the floor. Can we do a roll call, play on this one? This is to rescind the five thousand dollars to zero, as a zero balance in the CIP program for the Veterans Memorial. Roll call.
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor Bergeron?
Aye.
Counselor Mike Lippert?
Aye.
Counselor Branch?
Aye.
Counselor Plasky?
Aye.
Counselor Minutelli?
Nay.
Counselor Carr?
Aye.
Jim and Glennon?
Aye.
Zero balance on that one. Are there any other changes? Because I'd like to see if we're going to approve this budget tonight or what we want to do with it. There is one thing that I would like to counsel to look at. You all received this this evening, a sheet here. And I asked the administrator to give a cost to the council for coffee, a yearly subscriptions to newspapers, which he provided. The excellent newsletters, one hundred twenty-nine, one hundred twenty-seven ninety-two, I'm sorry, Union Leader is one hundred twenty-seven ninety-two, excellent newsletter, one hundred and eight sixty-eight, Foster's one hundred thirty-two sixty, total three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents per year. Coffee expenses from July, oh, beginning of the fiscal year to January, oh, nine, still within the current fiscal year, was seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, which is a total of one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and three cents, which I've averaged out to be a hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-two cents for the last seven months. I think that's a luxury. I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem with the coffee if they want to go to a, pay as you go, but with everything going on here, you talk about wanting to save some money, that is clearly an area where it could be saved. And I know the administrator had made a comment that, well, we read the papers to see what's happening in our community. Well, it's nice to be able to do that, but you can go online and read the papers also. So I would ask the council what they want to do with that. Counselor Pulaski?
On the newspapers, the two newspapers of the three that cover us the most are the excellent newsletters and Foster's. And I think for archival purposes, for having that and putting them into our archives.
They don't go into archives.
They don't, they just get read.
They get thrown out.
And thrown.
What we do is we go through the newspapers and if there is an article about Newmarket, we cut it out and we save it. Since I've been here, that's been a policy that I've.
But now you can do that online.
Well, but, you know, I don't go online to read the newspaper. It's not a, it's not a habit of mine. I don't particularly like reading, you know, a lot of material on the computer, I generally would print it off.
Or maybe.
So I don't go to the newspapers to look at what's there.
Maybe Kathy could print it for you.
I.
Scrapbook that way, I don't know.
Well, what the point I was getting at is possibly dropping just the Union Leader and possibly decreasing the coffee expenses considerably, where I know there are times where you have meetings where you have guests, where you bring coffee in and you can't say, well, it's gonna be fifty cents for a cup of coffee.
No, I meant the employees.
You do, you do need to have some coffee expenses, but for the employees, I think it should be on a pay basis. But I would like to see the Union Leader subscription done away with, keep the excellent newsletter and Foster's subscriptions and work out some sort of plan for coffee expenses.
I, I think the Union Leader, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pulaski, is probably, you get that because it's a statewide.
Yes.
All right, Counselor Carr?
I applaud the idea of cutting money out of the budget, but to me, this is nickels and dimes.
Why don't you spring it up?
I don't have a problem with maybe asking people to donate something for the coffee because they have a more, the new coffee maker is, tends to be a little bit more expensive than just having a pot of coffee there. So maybe you'd make a charge of twenty-five cents or fifty cents per cup. That way, the people who actually use it pay, the people who don't use it don't pay. And I don't know how many, like what percentage of the staff actually uses it, but, and of course, you don't charge guests for it. But that would at least, you know, cut some of the cost.
All the buildings have this? Just the town hall?
Oh, no, this will, this will be across all the board.
Everybody.
All, all the departments have coffee and newspapers, you know, maybe, I don't know, DPW may not have newspapers, but they have coffee, PD has coffee. What we do here, we're gonna do across the board.
Do they all use the same machine that you do or do they?
I think, I think the, the, at the DPW, they have sort of the, like the Mr. Coffee. I believe at the PD, it's a similar situation to what we have here.
Yeah, I think it is. It just doesn't seem like that much money to, to save to.
Just, just so you're aware, the police department, there's no cost to the town.
Right, they volunteer.
When the bill comes in, one of their, I think it's one of their part-time, police officers pays the entire bill.
Yeah, I think so too, yeah. Now, this seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-three cents, is that just for the town hall?
Yes.
Or is that everybody?
For half, half a year.
Everybody here at the town hall.
Seven months, yeah.
So that's double that. Maybe you just put out a thing for donations for coffee or something.
Just so you, you know, this money, money is just for six months.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. And it is an expense, but it's also something.
All right, so if there's a motion, we'll entertain it. If there's no motion, then we'll leave it as it is, but I just wanted to know what the cost was, now we know, so.
And I, I think maybe with, I myself would like to see the newspapers remain and maybe when we have our workshop, we can discuss the coffee expenses in two weeks at the workshop.
Well, it's part of the budget and that's what I'm saying, that's why. But she has an idea, Counselor Carr had a, had a very good idea, so at this point, why don't we do this? Leave it as it is in the budget. And my intention was not to come in and start slashing it, but I, I needed to know what that cost was and we didn't know that, because I was coming in, I see newspapers here and newspapers there, you know, I don't have a problem with people reading the newspapers, but I needed to know on the tax side, taxes, taxpayer rather, what that cost was, and I know that. So if the council doesn't want to do anything, well, fine, I don't have a problem with that. But I needed to know what it was and thank you for providing that. So I don't see if the council wants to do anything, there's nothing there, but we can discuss later on to whether there should be a charge to that and we can get that on the workshop. So if there's, do we need to do something on this, else on this budget? What about the revenue side?
Well, yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to, a while back, you had asked me to put together where we are on revenue and you have that and you pack it, so I'd like to, if you want to go over that.
Yep.
You have a, there's a, you've got a two-page document that's dated, mine's there, January twenty-ninth, but I think yours is earlier than that. The numbers are the same. It looks like, it looks like this.
Yeah, you don't have an extra one, do you?
Yeah, I do have an extra one.
Oh, yeah.
I guess everybody's been concerned in revenue and I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes and go over. The way you stand now. All right, the way the revenue is broken down, it's broken down by taxes and this does not include property taxes. So the total taxes that you budgeted for this year are about thirty-eight thousand dollars less than, we're projecting it, but it's about, it's gonna be about thirty-eight thousand dollars less than what you projected.
Can you tell us where you are in the sheet of paper?
Right here, there's a, there's a total taxes.
Okay.
From the left-hand column.
Little touch, okay, all right, I got you.
About a quarter of the way down. You can see you budgeted one hundred and fifty-five six in this current year budget and you're gonna take in about one hundred and seventeen five roughly, so you're gonna be short about thirty-eight thousand dollars. The next section now is state revenue. You budgeted six twenty-two eight twelve.
Okay, I have the highlighter. Sorry.
It's okay. Well, if you, if I, if I get ahead of you, stop me, please.
I lost you.
Your budget, budget is six twenty-two eight twelve, you're gonna bring in about seven hundred and eight thousand dollars.
So we're up.
You're up. Licenses, permits and fees, which include motor vehicle registrations, stickers, boat registrations, dog licenses and so on, and building permits, you're gonna be short, you estimated one million four oh-nine seven hundred for this current year, gonna be at about a million two fifty-six seven eighty-two, or about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars short from your projections. The main sources of that is you're gonna be about a hundred thousand, a hundred and five thousand dollars short on motor vehicle registrations and about fifty-five thousand dollars short on building permits.
That's substantial.
Yeah.
We don't have control.
No, we have no control there. The only way we have the control is through the budgeting process, we don't have the control on the revenue side of that.
Right, but I, I think that, let me, let me get through this and then I'll, I'll tell you what.
Are you gonna solve our problem?
Huh?
Are you gonna solve our problem?
I'm not sure if there's an exact word, but that's all right. The next section totals from departments, US data is about a hundred and forty-seven thousand eight twenty-five and you're gonna bring in about two hundred and fifty-one thousand, so you're gonna be over by about a hundred and three thousand dollars. The majority of that is in, is in dispatch, the receipts, ambulance receipts.
But isn't the ambulance money going into the CIP revolving?
The ambulance, you're only putting forty-five thousand in. We're estimating this is gonna be over and above that.
Okay.
So that's a plus one oh-three four eighteen. The next page, the next section, miscellaneous revenue. You, you estimated three hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred, you're gonna come in about two hundred and nine, sorry, about a hundred and forty thousand four fifty, or a shortage of two hundred and nineteen thousand fifty dollars. The majority, pretty much all of that, is in interest and investments. We estimated on that line alone, three hundred and twenty-five thousand. I don't have to tell you what's happened to interest earnings, it's gonna come in about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
The rental, rent of municipal property, is that the Wilson Fund?
I think, I think a piece of that is in there.
Yeah.
But not.
Why not renting that now at all?
No, I think the, I think a piece of that was budgeted for.
Yeah, I think it was.
Because you weren't collecting anyway, so it's just six of one, half dozen of the other. So the total, the total general fund, looks like you're gonna be having a shortfall of about two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Now, the good news is that when you build your budget, you put five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from surplus, or you allocated five hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to a maximum of five hundred and fifty from surplus to go in to offset the taxes. So that's gonna be in addition to that two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars shortfall. So overall, you, I guess the message I want to get across is you're down about two hundred thousand dollars, but you still have some room in there, so you're not gonna be that far off because of what you allocated for, for surplus.
Fund, fund balance.
Yeah, you're gonna be, right now, you're about two hundred thousand dollars to the good when you add that factor in.
And, and those funds are going to reflect how we operate in the next fiscal year.
Sure, the tax rate, right.
Plus the council has already cut, what, what do we have now, total of three hundred and fifty thousand, Mr. Pulaski, a little more than that?
Five hundred, yep.
About three hundred and fifty thousand, so, okay.
So of that five fifty you set aside, about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, that's gonna go back in the surplus at the end of the year. With all of that in mind, we put, I took those numbers, shared them with department heads and we added, we went in and adjusted the revenue numbers in the current year budget to accurately reflect where the shortfalls are. I believe you have a copy of the revenue budget too.
Can we look at the recreation fund?
Sure.
Budgeted revenue was two hundred and nineteen thousand three seventy-four, year-to-date forty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-one.
Right, cyclical.
Yeah.
They get all the money in the spring.
Yeah, that was my question. It all comes in in the springtime, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I, I put this together, I shared it with department heads, they reviewed it and I think you came up, Chairman Glennon, they reviewed it and signed off on it.
Right.
So, you know, I didn't, I didn't want this to be my numbers, I wanted it to be the department's numbers.
Yep, yep. Okay, we're estimating the land, fill receipts, it'll be twenty-four thousand, total revenue forecast, well, budgeted revenue, but the forecast was thirty-three thousand. Where are we right now? Eighteen thousand, so we may be under by nine thousand?
Over.
Over.
Under is in parentheses.
Okay, yep, I see it now, okay.
Question?
Counselor Quox?
So we're gonna put five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general fund?
You, what you've done is you've, you've set aside five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from your surplus.
Okay.
To go towards the tax rate. So whatever you don't use of that, so in other words, you built in a cushion of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, it effectively becomes revenue.
Right.
If you don't use it all, it's gonna go back in the surplus.
But someone explained something to me once, and, now, we did the same thing last year to defray the tax rate, right?
You typically do whatever you.
But somebody, and I'm not sure they were a big technical, financial person, that by us putting money that we've already gotten through taxes, through spending so much and having those taxes and having that money in the surplus fund and then using that year after year to lower the taxes, why don't we just lower the taxes by lowering our spending? Because it, you're working, it seems, like I said, they explained it completely and if, I wish I had the paper with me, but it seems like we're just defeating the purpose.
So I, I'm, so I'm clear, you wanna take that surplus and just apply it against the tax rate?
Is, is that what we're doing?
No, well, in this case, a piece of it, you're applying it against the tax rate.
Two hundred and something because we're two hundred and something under budget and revenues?
Effectively, yes.
Okay, and we did the same thing last year, we put in a tie of five.
You typically do that every year.
But why don't you just cut your spending to keep the tax rate just low, period? Isn't that the way to go? I, I'm gonna get that information from them and, and bring it up, but it seems like, you know, it doesn't seem the right thing to do. It was explained to me and I fully understood it when it was explained to me.
Your surplus is made, made up of two, two different components. One of which is excess revenue that you brought in over and above what you forecast.
Yeah.
And the other piece is underspending. Those two added together make your surplus.
Underspending and?
No, there's budget.
And, and unexpended revenues, okay.
Right, and the budget.
Those are two components that make up your surplus.
Okay.
So the money that's in our surplus is a combination of both. It's a combination of underspending. Typically, you can't, we can't overspend the budget anyways.
Right.
And typically, this town is very good about not spending up to the budget. Your managers, once you approve a budget for them, they stay well within their budget. I mean, if there's, if there's an emergency, a Mother's Day flood, they will come to you and say, you know, and you can, this board can appropriate money in an emergency directly out of surplus.
Okay.
Okay, and the reason, and, you know, I know some people say, why don't we just take that surplus and reduce the tax rate with it? You need that, that's, that's an emergency fund.
Yeah.
We've had that discussion a number of times, so you really can't just wipe all that out.
No.
It would be nice if you could do that, but it's not a prudent thing to do, it affects your bond rating.
Right.
It affects your, if you have an emergency.
And that's all we have left in there is five fifty?
No, you've got, you've got about a million and one.
Okay.
And part of, you'd have about a million and three, but you're, we're gonna have to eat another, almost two hundred thousand dollars, I think it's a hundred and eighty-six thousand from the health insurance fund.
Yeah, we're still paying that off.
We're still paying that off.
Yeah, okay.
So after all, that's taken into effect, it's gonna be about a million and one in surplus.
How much longer do we have on that to pay off?
This'll be the last piece of it.
Nice.
Yeah, and where do I see, two questions, are you all set?
Yes, I'm all set.
Did we not take money last year from the TIF downtown?
Yes.
And move it in? Is that something we're gonna do this year?
That's, the goal is that we would take money from the TIF and apply it towards reducing the tax rate, yes.
Okay, of course, that, when is that done?
We set the tax rate in probably late October.
Late October, okay, so that's when that's done. And where do we show that revenue?
The increment of the taxes. The five fifty that Dawn talked about. Fund balance budgeted is five fifty, well, a portion of that was from the fund balance and a portion was from the, the TIF district that we utilized so as reducing the tax rate.
Okay, so there's actually three components?
Right.
Not just two, there's three components.
No.
It is the TIF, it is the department's underspending and it's the, what was the other one?
Fund balance.
Excess revenue.
The fund balance, excess revenue, so there's three components to that, okay. Do you remember what we put in last year from the TIF?
The previous year, we didn't put anything from the TIF.
Right.
It was straight from the, from the fund balance at that time prior to being, you know.
Yeah, wow, yeah, let's not go there again, but you don't have an idea what we put in last, in this past October?
I want to say that it was.
I don't have it, wait a second. No.
I want to say it was around three hundred.
Something's wrong with my mind, it's sticking with four hundred thousand, but I don't know, it could be that, okay. We put a sizable amount in there, remember that, okay, great. Does anybody have any questions on the revenue side? The only other question, I, I don't see any lights, so I'm gonna continue, is, is there something we can do as a council that, on a workshop, that we need to go back here and adjust some of these fees to increase them? I know you can't do anything with, with, there are things that we can do.
One of the things that, and Brian Hart brought to my attention was the fact that, you know, we pay nine dollars for a recycling bin and we actually sell them for seven.
Huh?
You know, we need to.
Yeah.
Up our costs so that we're covering our expense, even if it's ten bucks.
Well, let me buy two first before you just.
They just, they just went up last night. But we can, you know, I mean, there's, there's things that, I mean, relative to the fees that are charged by the different departments, we can look at that. One of the things that we talked about early on when I first arrived here was the impact fees, gonna be having a lot of building that's gonna go downtown, we should consider looking at our impact fees and, and potentially looking at increasing that. So we have, you know, while that's something that council has to specifically appropriate from, but, you know, we need to, we need to look at that, especially with some of the projects that we have coming down the line. But, but, you know, mainly in the area of totals, you know, from the departments, receipts from departments, those, I think we can look at and, some adjustments there.
Can you do this with the council's blessing and see if the council will approve? And we'll get it on a workshop, I'm not saying right, you know, like next week or anything, but can you come in and Dawn come in with a recommendation to the council to where some of these fees can be increased and the council will look at that and give some type of approval or, you know, recommendation on that? Is that okay with the council?
Mm-hmm.
To look at that? When I look over here at police restitution, a fourteen fifty, year-to-date, fourteen fifty, you know, one thousand one fifteen, is that right? Am I reading that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, give me an idea what that money is.
What that is, is if somebody, somebody goes to court and they order restitution to be paid.
Okay.
Like if they, I don't know, somehow they determine that the, the police incurred some cost.
Okay.
Because of what they did, that's ordered by the courts.
And that's, why I'm asking that question is, where do we see revenue coming in for parking violations and where do we see for parking permits and all of that? Where does that come in, like, say, the Quonset Hut?
Well, that's, well, the, the revenue for the, for the parking is separate parking fund altogether.
That's part of the parking fund?
That's in the parking.
Okay. Okay. Well, when, when that show here is a source of revenue?
Because it's not general fund. You're looking at general fund revenue.
Oh, this is general fund, okay. All right, councils have any other questions for Don? Don, thank you very much for staying this late hour. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion by the council to accept the fiscal budget for '09 and '10 as it is, well, we don't know what it is because we made some changes to it tonight.
I've got.
Do you have it?
I've got it. Do you figure what it is?
Excuse me?
I have 10,205,226.
What is it?
10,205,226, is that right, Mike?
You don't know? Well, actually, we can do the motion to accept the budget as amended this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Can I have a roll call on that, please?
Counsel Quox.
Aye.
Counsel Bridgeron.
Aye.
Counsel LeBranche.
Aye.
Counsel Posky.
Aye.
Counsel Minutelli.
Aye.
Counsel Carr. Chairman Glennon.
Aye. Before the council goes and we go into old business, Julie Glover is here to give us an update on the boat ramp and their old business.
Thank you. I've got stuff everywhere. I received notification today from my contact at Fish and Game that they are willing to execute the lease with the agreement that we keep the four existing trailer spaces at the boat ramp and allocate or dedicate four trailer spaces in the Lamprey Street Bay Road lot. As you may recall, their previous numbers had been anywhere from 10 to 15 additional, but they are now willing to accept four trailer spaces.
A total of eight, coming down from the 15, and we don't have to worry about the Quonset hut.
Well, actually, it would be more than a total of eight because we'd always, we're always going to keep the four at the boat ramp.
Right.
They had initially been asking for 10 to 15 additional spaces.
So it was close to 20.
Yes, so now they're willing to accept four additional spaces, overflow spaces in the Lamprey Street lot.
For a total of eight.
For a total of eight.
Wonderful, Julie.
Excellent.
Have a good job.
So if the council so chooses and votes to accept their offer, I'll let them know that, and then they're going to change the lease, and we'll get the lease document to the council.
I don't think we can vote on it tonight, can we? Don't we have to have a public hearing on that?
No, no, this is just a recommendation which we've been talking about.
A recommendation to change the lease. I'll confirm with Fish and Game whether there then needs to be a public hearing prior to executing the lease.
Oh, okay.
But this would just be that you agree in principle, I suppose, and we'll move forward with the lease agreement.
Sounds like Counsel LeBranche is ready to do that.
No, actually, I just wanted to make sure that we actually own that lot at this point.
We don't own it at this point, but actually, actually, with the fact that we are in the process of negotiating the, a lease and possible sale of that, the NCDC, I don't think we'll have a problem with giving that to us at this point, because what they did was they, you know, gave it to their assigns, is proper word. So I think that we could ask for that lot at this point, and it would be ours, because that was part of the agreement that, that we had made with them.
Yeah.
I'll go back and look at that, and I'll have a conversation with the chair of the NCDC.
I would like to own it before we start putting spots in it.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely, we'll confirm that, but in addition to that, actually, the entity that is looking to develop the mills, it was actually one of their suggestions that we try to make this happen using that lot, so.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds great. Do we, if, can we make a motion and vote on it, and if we have to do public hearing, we'll just do a public hearing?
Well, let's just do the motion to accept what Julie is recommending is to accept the Fish and Game's request of just four additional, plus the four, a total of eight.
Right, and then we'll have to amend the lease, and that will still have to come before the council.
So moved.
Second.
Just want to make sure I understand it, so in theory, all we're voting on are eight spaces.
Correct.
We're not really designating where at this point.
Well, I say the where.
Well, there's four of them at the boat ramp.
There has to be four at the boat ramp.
There's four of them there.
And the reason.
Four others to be at a site chosen later date.
Well, but the last, if you will, offer that we made to the Fish and Game department was to utilize that Lamprey Street, Bay Street lot. So as the information came across to me from Fish and Game, they specifically referenced that lot. Now, I don't know whether Fish and Game would have an objection to the Spring Street lot over that one, but I know certainly in the discussions with the developer of the mills, they would prefer that the trailers not be dedicated to the Spring Street lot.
I agree, I just.
Right.
Okay.
Like to have ownership first.
Well.
I think we're there. I understand where you're coming from, and I.
We, we would get confirmation of that.
Right.
Obviously, before we execute the lease, we can't give away something we don't own.
So can, can we amend the motion to just say that we will allot eight spaces?
I think it has to be what they.
Well, we can, yeah.
That will be approved by.
It would still have to be approved by Fish and Game, yeah.
But will that work?
That'll work, and I'll come back for the, to the next council meeting with an answer relative to Lamprey. Yep.
A side of caution.
Just as soon be safe.
I guess we're all moving.
I amend my motion.
Who seconded it?
Second, I mean, yes, I'll amend it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel Quox.
Aye.
Counsel Bridgeron.
Aye.
Counsel LeBranche.
Aye.
Counsel Posky.
Aye.
Counsel Minutelli.
Aye.
Counsel Carr.
Aye.
Chairman Glennon.
Aye. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
That's all the reason why we need you. Old business, any other old business? What's the other one? New business. New business? Administrator, you have a report? You want to?
I gave you some things that, this evening, which we took care of because Ms. Glover was here, but I just wanted to update you on the landfill. As you know, we're looking to, we have to develop four pairs of wells out there. CMA, our engineers have had a discussion with Dory Wiggins, and she has given permission to sort of an emergency permit for us to be able to go out there and install the four wells that we need to do. At the present time, CMA is looking for bids, or obtaining bids, relative to the work out there. We do have bids for the drilling rigs, but there was some other place, some other aspects of it that both Brian Kilbane, United Technologies, and I questioned, because they seemed rather high, and they're getting bids, we should have them back early next week, and hopefully be able to get out to drill those wells and get them installed while we still have snow on the ground.
So they don't really anticipate too much of a problem with DES?
DES has, has given permission to move forward on it.
Oh, they have?
Yeah.
Okay, I hear that part, thank you. So a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Follows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.